I now call this meeting of the Cranston City Council to order. This time would ask everybody, please turn off your cell phones. Will the city clerk please take the roll?
President?
Present.
Here.
Here. Present.
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 Present. Present.
Present. Did you forget?
Is there a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes in the last meeting?
Here.
Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 You missed him before. Point of information, you missed Councilman Poplouskas on the call. Okay.
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes. Anybody stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. It is a free, sovereign, and just nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any other public acknowledgements or commendations?
I have none.
Public hearings? Any member of the public like to speak on any doctored item? But first, Colonel, Captain Vincent Mackintyre would like to speak on a police grant that we currently could be applying for.
Thank you, Councilman. The grant that I'm presenting this evening is the 2016 Cranston Police Department's federal Vern JAG local allocation. This is a grant that comes out once a year and is different from the various federal grants that are available to other law enforcement agencies. This particular grant has been applied for the purchase of an additional K-9 vehicle that's specifically suited for the use of one of our K-9 officers and dog. This purchase would further enhance our growing K-9 unit, and the vehicle in question would be partially paid for by this grant, but the balance being paid for by grant match funds. The implementation of this grant will be done in two stages. First, the purchase itself. The vehicle will be a 2017 Ford Expedition four-door utility vehicle. This will be purchased through a suitable vendor on the awarding of this grant. The second phase will be the deployment of the vehicle. Upon successful purchase and outfitting, it would immediately be placed into service in the Cranston Police Department's Uniformed Division. Timeline of the grant, with the successful awarding of the grant, we'll seek to obtain and deploy the vehicle within 12 months. That's a very generous timeline. I expect that will be closer to three to six months. This particular grant falls within the JAG allocation requisite program identifiers, which are a series of identifiers that every federal grant has to meet. In particular, we fall under the communications, equipment general, officer safety, policing, and vehicles other identifiers. In terms of the actual numbers regarding this particular grant, the total of the vehicle as quoted is $44,650. The estimated funding as a result of this grant will be $27,195 coming from the Vern JAG fund, split, the balance being $17,455. As I previously stated, this will be coming out of our grant match fund in our budget. That is all. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions for Captain Mackintyre? Okay. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you, Council President.
Anybody else in the public to speak on any doctored item? Next on the agenda is ordinance as amended, Title II, the Code of the City of Cranston, entitled Administration and Personnel Arts Commission. Councilman Stikos?
This proposal does several things in order to accommodate the large number of applicants we have to serve on the Arts Commission. The first thing it does, and this is a suggestion of Councilman Poplouskas, is it adds three alternates to the commission. The commission has nine members, seven appointed by the council and two appointed by the mayor. This adds three alternates appointed by the city council. And it also gives an ex officio seat to the artists' exchange, and the feeling was that that should be done because of the importance of the artists' exchange to the arts in the city of Cranston. So that's it.
Okay. Thank you. Anybody in the public interest in making comments on this particular ordinance? Hearing none, we'll move on. Resolutions. A resolution instituting proceedings for the abandonment of a portion of D Street. Petition was filed by Saint Santa Maria, the Protestant Society. This resolution is allowed, is to allow the city clerk to advertise for a public hearing before Public Works Committee in August. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second. Motion made to approve, and there's a second, and any discussion? Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. D Street is a paper street that runs, if you're facing the Protestant Society where we have the feast, along the left side is a paper street called D Street. They have used that property for a lot of years, from what they told us. So I think they're just doing this to make it, I guess, a legal property deed settlement. So it will be going before Public Works, but it's a paper street that, you know, will never be used, hasn't been used since they started drawing maps, so. But it's going to go before the committee so we can vet it further.
Any other comments on this particular ordinance?
Are you in the strike?
Yes. Yes, Counsel.
Public Works has no problem with this. There's no city sewer or storm drain assets. He does recommend that they do check with Providence Water and National Grid just to, you know, make sure that everything's okay, but as far as sewer and water, there's nothing on the property, so.
Okay. So will you be available for questions at the Public Works Committee meeting, Mr. Director?
Yes.
Thank you. Councilman Asido?
Yeah, just to the members of the public, all we're doing is we're giving the clerk the ability to advertise, and there'll be a public hearing in front of full committee, so it's not like the street's being turned over right away. There'll be another public hearing. To the director, can we make sure that somehow, I don't know if you want our clerk to send him a letter, or maybe the administration could send him a letter to go ahead and check on those other items with National Grid, or Providence Water, or anybody else? So this way here, you know, we can expedite this if we have that. I mean, I don't know if it's proper for Maria to do it, or the administration, or both.
Through the chair? Part of the procedure that I do with, that's required with regard to abandonments is notification to all utility companies, as well as soliciting the opinion from the various departments involved, which are Public Works, engineering, planning. Those are all informed and given an opportunity to weigh in, and so are all utility companies.
Okay.
And they will be advised along with the advertisement.
So by the time, if I may, Mr. President, so by the time we have this committee meeting, if we don't hear from any of the utility companies, it's safe to say that there's no issues, or are we willing, going to be able to proceed to the next step, or do we need to wait to hear from them?
Yes, there's sufficient time. They usually, if they have an interest, they do respond. They let us know. The last one we did, we had notification on a couple of issues, and we always make provisions for that in any abandonment as one of the conditions.
Thank you. Any other questions concerning this resolution? Hearing none. Well, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
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 Yes. Our report of committees, a sewer tie-in request from Anne Marie Di Biagio for property on 1707 Plainfield Pike in Johnston.
Mr. President, this item came in front of the full Public Works Committee, and a positive recommendation and vote was taken, so recommend passage.
I'll second. Motion made in second concerning passage. Any other questions? Councilman Faria?
Through the President to the Chair, I thought that we had discussed, met some questions we had on waivers to get the town of Johnston, if we could do this. I know there's some things brought up, that there was some state law that was enacted. I know we had a lot of questions that we were getting some answers on, so before we vote, I would love to get that kind of background.
Mr. President, may I answer this?
Yes.
I agree with you, and that evening, I believe, Mr. Mason said that one was asked directly, saying that would he have the ability to make sure and go in there and look at that, that it was being done properly? I believe he said yes, it was. There is a state law on the books that if it is an emergency situation, we kind of have no choice, and we have to allow it. I'm hoping in this case, it is an emergency situation, that our engineering department and our Public Works Director will make sure that it's done, you know, according to code and properly, so there aren't issues. And I don't know that the administration can respond on their behalf if they want.
Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. Mr. Mason assured us that unless these four caveats are, you know, performed by the company, that he would not approve it. So he assured us all that they'd have to jump through hoops to make sure that they got this, all this stuff done before we'd approve it. So I agree with Councilman Farina, I think. Is Mr. Mason here, or can, you know, has he talked to the administration about? He says he's going to hold them to as higher standard because they are a garage, auto body, slash, gas station, slash, slash, slash. So our concern is dumping oil down the toilets, and he assured us that before it was approved, that all these things would be addressed.
Yeah, I believe you have the same list that I have in front of me with the four specifications that need to be accomplished. So once that is, I guess, once that is shown, then he can sign off on it.
Through the chair?
Yes.
The memo from Mr. Mason was dated June 6th, and his approval was contingent on those four items, so perhaps it may be appropriate to approve it, subject to meeting those requirements.
Could we do that? And could we get a report from him, or some sort of email saying that they did?
Sure.
Satisfied with all four, all four of these? I just received this yesterday. You guys received it before I did, so I don't know if any of these stipulations have been met.
Okay. Councilman Fabegio?
Thank you, Council President. I was there at the meeting, and I think a couple of things. One of them is a Department of Transportation permit in order to do the curb cut, so that would be from the state, the municipal industrial pretreatment program review and approval. That has to be done, and there's some engineering that has to be approved. So I'm pretty comfortable with that, so I would make the amendment, move to amend to include the subject to that, those four items.
Second. Okay. Councilman Asido?
Yeah, I second.
Okay.
Another minority.
Any other questions concerning this, Councilman Santa Maria?
Council President, will that include that report that I just asked Director Barone for?
Yeah, I believe the clerk has that report, and I'm sure she'll give a copy to.
No, the report that all the four things have been.
Yeah, she has it. She has it.
Yeah, they should all be in the amendment.
Completed yet?
I don't think those specifications have been met.
Right. But we're subject to them in this amendment. If you want, we can have, I can read them, or the clerk can read them. If you want to put them right in the amendment, subject to the following, subject to final engineering in accordance with Annex A of the Sewer Regulations and Public Works Approval, payment of appropriate city of Cranston impact fees, municipal industrial pretreatment program review and approval, and the applicant must obtain a physical alteration permit from Rhode Island Department of Transportation for excavation into Plainfield Pike. So that's part of the motion.
All right, so this will be part of the amended motion?
That's correct.
Any other discussion concerning this? Hearing none. Clerk, will the clerk please take the vote on the amended motion?
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
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 Councilman Asido?
I just have a question for Pat or the city solicitor. We're passing this pending. How long really do we wait pending before we withdraw the recommendation? I mean, I don't know how long it takes to get DOT permits, but I don't want this hanging out there longer than 90 days. And if we can get what the solicitor's opinion is on that, and if that's the case, then I'm going to make another amendment that this approval is subject to what Councilman Fabegio said, and only for a period of 90 days, and then it just dies.
I mean, what if the state takes longer to get their, their?
Well, he's picking a time period.
Physical timer.
Through the chair?
Yes.
If the council wants to monitor, rather than put that time restriction, since we don't know how feasible and what the requirements are, we could just, with the approval, but I can put it on the docket again in three months for status review.
Solicitor Quinlan?
I agree. I think that's a better tactic than doing this. I think it should be, I mean, I don't like the idea of approving things subject to, because of course it's an open-ended question, so I suggest that you put it back, bring it back for status in three months, and then make the determination. Then you know when they have it. Question? Patrick? Any other question on that?
That is part of the amendment, Mr. Quinlan, subject to, or do we have to say it has to come before the council, or the fact we're just saying it is okay?
I think it should go back.
Administratively, I'll just put it on. My question is, do you want it to appear before the Public Works Committee for that status report, or before the full council?
It's up to the Council President, but I just, like Mr. Quinlan said, I just hate having stuff hang out there with no kind of cutoff time, and, you know, who knows how long this could take getting some of these permits.
I think for complete transparency, something like this, it should go before the full city council.
I'll make a note and have it on the docket.
Any other questions concerning this? Now, we've had a yes vote on the amended version, now we have to take another vote on the version, on the resolution. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Poplouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Almody?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Ordinance Committee Chairman Arquero?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. First order of business is 5-16-05, ordinance amendment of Title II, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, title Administration and Personnel Arts Commission, entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion on this motion? Councilman Poplouskas?
Thank you, Council President Lanny. I actually like to make an amendment to this ordinance. I wasn't at the ordinance committee when this came up. I know we added three alternates to be appointed by the council, but I know turnout has been high, and a lot of people have been wanting to serve on the new Arts Commission, so I'd like to make an amendment to add one alternate by the administration, so there's an opportunity for another person to serve the city and be on the Arts Commission. Take me to read the motion.
Is that in the form of a motion?
Yeah, I can read it out if you want.
Point of information, what line were you going to assert that, Counsel?
Yep, so line 28, where it says, "Three alternates."
Right.
I want to change the three to four.
Okay.
And put four alternates appointed by, four alternates, one appointed by the administration, three appointed by the council.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, now this will have to be advertised. You realize that?
Have to be advertised?
Yeah. Councilman Stikos?
Could I suggest you put that in as a separate ordinance?
Yeah, I can do that for new business.
And then we could kind of get a commission going, or we could add.
Yeah, that's fine. I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay. Any other questions concerning this? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
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 Next item, 5-16-06, ordinance amendment of Title 10, Chapter 32, Dakota City of Cranston, 2005, titled Motor Vehicles and Traffic, Tacoma, No Parking Certain Hours, entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion made in second to approve. Any questions concerning the motion? Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I guess I wasn't at the meeting, and there were a couple of questions on Tacoma. Just let me give you a brief background. Tacoma is off afterward, next to CCAP, daycare, and kindergarten. It's a very narrow street. Tacoma right now has no parking at all times. On drop-off and pickup at CCAP, they blocked the street, literally blocked the street. No emergency vehicles could get in or out. I contacted CCAP. CCAP is beyond frustration trying to get them to move. They refuse to move. I also got calls from people in Tacoma, who said because there's no parking any time, they can't have visitors, they can't have landscapers, they can't have anybody park in front of their house. I talked to Mr. Mason, I talked to CCAP, and I talked to the neighbors, and they all agreed that timed no parking, so that the police can enforce the no parking issue. They've tried putting flyers in the backpacks of the children, to no avail. So rather than hurt the people on Tacoma, they can't park at all in front of their house, we timed it to these times based on the pickup and drop-offs of CCAP. Mr. Mason very kindly drew up the amendment, I mean, the ordinance for me, so I would ask for passage.
Any other questions concerning this? Okay. The city clerk just informed me, we do not have an engineering report on this, and he still has 30 days to get the report to us.
Okay, that's why I asked Mr. Mason to write the ordinance, if we get that, he had already done that.
So should we?
Not officially.
So should we withdraw?
Mr. Cool?
Mr. President, anticipating that question, I reviewed the chart and ordinance provision dealing with the traffic engineer, and I believe there's some flexibility in this case that ordinance refers to parking facilities. I'm not, given the limited scope of this, I'm not sure we need to wait for the traffic engineer's report, and I'd have no objection if the council went forward.
Any other questions concerning this? And does, Council President, does anyone else have any objections?
No, I don't think so.
Okay. Well, I hear no other comments. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Poplouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Almody?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Finance Committee, Councilman Stikos, Chairman.
Okay. First item here, I just wanted an update on the Sanders School building. I think the last time we got a report from the administration, CCAP had looked at, was either going to look at it, or had recently looked at it.
Mr. President, Mr. Chairman, I had an occasion to speak to a vice president from CCAP just about 10 days ago, and they did tour the building, and he expressed continuing interest in trying to work out some arrangement with the city to rehab and use the building. And we talked about, he needs to do a little more research, and then we'll come back to the city to arrange a meeting to start these discussions.
Good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, we have the resolution authorizing the motor vehicle tax abatements recommended by the tax assessor.
Second.
Is there a motion?
There's a motion and a second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Poplouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Almody?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
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 Next, we have the recommendation on waiving interest on overdue tax payments recommended by the city treasurer for various hardships.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Poplouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Almody?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Yes.
The next ordinance is to authorize the use of Western Library impact fees for capital projects at Central and Knightsville branches. This was, this is a follow-up ordinance to what we did in the budget.
Motion approved. Second. Second. Motion made and approved. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
Councilman Rock?
Yes.
Councilman Asido?
Yes.
Councilman Poplouskas?
Yes.
Councilman Almody?
Yes.
Councilman Faria?
Yes.
Yes.
The next ordinance is also something that we did in the budget, utilizing police impact fees to pay for the lease on the police station.
Motion approved. Second. Motion made in second. Any discussion? Councilman Santa Maria?
Thank you, Council President. I said, I had a couple of reservations about this at the budget process, and I still do. I don't see where impact fees, you know, pay for a lease payment on a building. My definition, I think, has always been lease payment, how it affected with sewer, water, education, et cetera. I was going through the, President, if I could ask the solicitor what his definition of lease payment was, and if this falls under that category.
Unfortunately, I don't have the memo. I know I had done one for you, Councilman Stikos, on, and Evan and I had done one on apportionment of impact fees, but I think one of the goals of the impact fees under the state statute is to address needs for either new capital facilities or improvement of facilities caused by, you know, new developments, which add population to the area, and typically police is one of those areas. Now, whether it's a lease, or whether it's a payment on a building, or if it's rent for a substation, for example, I think all of those would qualify. And I do think that a lease is reasonably related to the safety of the area when you're increasing the population.
Thank you. Councilman Asido?
Yes. To the administration, do we know how much money, I can't seem to find it in this packet, is in that impact fee currently, and how much money we're using towards the lease? Isn't it in the bag someplace? And then the next question would be, uh, any new development would still be paying into the impact, lease impact fee? Those monies are just staying here, right? We're not, um, designating any new monies collected to go for a lease payment. Is that correct? A hundred thousand dollars?
Councilman, uh, ordinance calls for fifty-two thousand from the east or west and thirty-eight from the other, so that's a total of ninety thousand dollars that was taken approximately from the, uh, impact fees to be, to supplement the rent, so then we could reduce the amount of rent to buy more cars. That was the, the whole gist of the--
Right, no, I, I, I understand that. I just didn't know what amount was going to be used. Was it going to be the amount that the city had on the books the night we voted for this in committee?
Correct.
Okay, so if that's the case, are there going to be any monies left in that, the, the police impact fee?
Uh, just what's collected going forward. We basically took a hundred percent at the time of the budget.
Okay, a hundred percent as of today?
As of the time of the budget.
So, zero balance.
Okay, time of the budget. Yes. So, any new monies after the budget? That's right. Any, any new impact fees that were collected since then?
And then to the solicitor, to designate those monies for something else, we'd have to still do it by resolution and come back and have a process, correct? So this isn't automatically that every year the impact fees go to lease payoff?
Correct.
Don't do it in the future. Yeah, don't do it in the future. I mean, this is what, this is the--
Councilman, uh, Bott?
Thank you, Council President. Uh, I'll be voting no against this. Uh, I believe what you're doing is you're introducing a, uh, budget deficit by taking a one-time, well, definitely not one-time because we're exhausting the fund and paying rent, so next year we're going to be actually in a hole to pay the rent for the police station, so I'll be voting against this.
Uh, Councilman Stikos?
Uh, the police cars are, in response to Councilman Botts, the police cars are also one-time expense, and we have done this probably five years in a row, uh, at least, so I would urge people to vote for it. It's a good use of the, the funds. We built a new police station and we're still paying for it, so this is helping pay for the new police station that we built.
Any other discussions? Uh, my only comment on this would be that historically, I believe, over the last five, ten years since the police station has been built, we've used impact fees to help offset the rent, so this is not a new idea. This has been going on historically since the police station has been in existence. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 No.
Yes.
Okay, and the, uh, next item, uh, is a resolution approving a loan order for the financing of a new heating and ventilation system at Edgewood Highland School.
Motion approved.
Second. Motion made in second to approve. Uh, any discussion? Councilman Favecchio? Just a point of information, did we skip one? We skipped one?
Oh, you're right, we did. Sorry. You're correct.
There's a motion on the floor right now. There's a motion before-- I just, you just wanted to remind-- Yeah, and-- We'll get back to it as soon as we complete this particular motion. Any discussion on this particular motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Uh, we, uh, now we have an ordinance authorizing the city to use Western Road impact fees for the repaving of Lipit Avenue.
Motion approved. Second.
This is what an impact fee is.
Motion made in second to approve. Is any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Chancellor Chair?
Yes. Okay, moving on, Claims Committee, Chairman Favecchio?
Thank you, Council President. Uh--
No, wait--
Oh, wait, was there one resolution? Do you want to do the, we missed the school resolution as well, I guess. No, we did the school--
We did, uh--
We did the school and then we did the impact fee.
Okay. Uh, we had one, one case that was settled, and, uh, the rest were referred to the solicitor, and that's all we had for the Claims Committee.
All right, that's for informational purposes only, no need for any action on this.
Mr. Cons, Mr. Council President?
Yes.
If I may, um, can we just go back to the resolution for the air conditioning for a second?
All right.
Um, I sit on that committee, and when I first got what the dollar amount was, I was kind of hot and bothered because it seems like it's a significant amount of money to the point where I kind of asked a ridiculous question, why don't we just build a new school? And then I was informed that if we did that, it'd be like a forty million dollar bill instead of two million five. Um, the school definitely needs it, um, they've done everything they could to get the best and, uh, the best pricing for it, so just, you know, some reference information here, so, because it is quite a lot of money.
Public hearings. Anybody, any member of the public that speaks on any item, docketed or undocumented, please come forward, give your name and address with a record.
Uh, good evening, Douglas Doe, one seventy-eight Lipit Avenue. Uh, first of all, we had another robust debate about solar power in Western Cranston. Just want to let you know about a new project that's come forward. This is on Lipit Avenue, uh, where I live, and by the way, thank you for the new road. Um, there's going to be a public informational meeting this Wednesday night at six o'clock, Faith Presbyterian Church on Hope Road. It's across from the old fire station and Chaffey Ballfields. Uh, as a way, just a brief preview of what you're going to find out if you do go, and I hope you do, it's about a hundred acre, a hundred eighty acre parcel of land off of Lipit Ave. It's all woods. It has a current subdivision plan for about forty houses. That was approved years ago. It was a new plan brought forth last year, much more compact, great deal, great deal of open space, a big improvement, that got the master plan, and then apparently didn't go any farther. This new plan for the solar power project calls for clearcutting sixty acres of woods and building a solar project that'll generate about fifteen to eighteen megawatts of solar power. Um, give you a comparison, the Hope Road is ten megawatts, that's about forty thousand solar panels. Do the math, this is about fifty-five to sixty-five thousand solar panels. Uh, I talked to a couple of my neighbors, and they were, as you can imagine, stunned beyond belief this was going to happen, and because of the actions of this, uh, council last year, there's nothing we can do about it except play our on the edges. Um, they can do it by right, um, I just want you folks to know what you're allowing to happen. Uh, it's now open season in Western Cranston. If you want, if you have farmland, you don't want to lease it to farmers, you can just cover it with solar panels, surround it with a chain link fence. And now if you have woodlands that you don't want to develop, or you can't find somebody to develop for you, you can simply clearcut them and cover them with solar panels and put them, surround them with a chain link fence. And there's a lot of empty woodlands in Cranston, Western Cranston. It's extremely unfortunate that what happened last year. I don't want to rehash that tonight. I just have one final point. Um, this subject comes up quite a bit at the subdivision meetings I go to, and there's a comment in, uh, the, uh, project narrative that came out today, and it reads simply, "The subdivision would have produced school-aged children." As if that's a bad thing. When did children become a dirty word in this city? I mean, don't we want neighborhoods with kids running around having fun playing, growing up? You know, when did our childhoods become, um, offensive? One of those new neighborhoods with kids running around playing, having fun, growing up in the city, become offensive? And that's what it sounds like from this narrative. You know, "The subdivision would have produced school-aged children." How horrible. You know, we all grow up in subdivision somewhere, and it just seems to me, um, the negativity of that state, it just shouldn't be something we countenance in the city. But thank you, and I hope you show up Wednesday night. Thank you.
Is there anybody else from the public that speaks on any item whatsoever? Hearing none. I, oh, please come forward, give your name and address with a record, please.
Uh, Carolyn Maderas, the Executive Director of the Alliance to Save Communities. I came before this council earlier in the year regarding the city resolution that you passed, uh, for mandatory registration notification of sex offenders at homeless shelters. Um, this biggest problem stemmed from Harrington Hall as the source. It's always had a blight kind of image, and, um, what was happening was the sex offenders going in there were not getting registered in a timely fashion. The staff and directors of House of Hope running Harrington Hall, um, had two issues that they brought up in Senate Judiciary when this resolution went on to the State House, um, and it was, number one, the social worker code of ethics, we don't have to notify the police if Bruce Peavy comes into the door and says, "I'm a level three, I'm want to live here," and don't call the police and tell them I'm a sex offender. The social worker code of ethics is not a law, it's a philosophy. Uh, Senator Lombardi reminded them of this fact, and that in fact, the law, S two-three-one-nine that we were looking at, was a law, and if they chose to break it, the consequences would be incarceration. The second reason they gave for not registering sex offenders as they were coming in was they might be short-staffed and there might be a toilet that's clogged that they need to get to. I can't even go there. I did juvenile reentry. Your priority when you're doing an intake of a client is all the needs of that client, all the data that's coming in with that client, secure that client, and know if they're a risk to themselves or anyone else in that shelter or anyone in the community, any notifications you have to do. So I don't want to hear about clogged toilets. So Bill S two-three-one-nine had some pretty stiff consequences, and I worked with Senator Lombardi. The AG thought they were a little stiff, and we loosened them up. It was like an automatic five years incarceration and a five thousand dollar fine if they didn't comply with sex offender registration notification. Um, the changes I made, and we all made, working together with Senate leadership, was the, we made misdemeanor two fines in a tier approach. First, um, it would be first offense, misdemeanor, five hundred dollars, second offense, one thousand dollar fine, missed, and felony, and third offense, recommended to be a five thousand dollar fine and a one-year incarceration, which the AG's office seemed to like. This bill, Sub A, passed the Senate floor unanimously. I want you to know that, and the Senate Judiciary passed this bill unanimously. Um, I gave you all a packet to look at. I don't know if you have it in front of you or not. Good. That was what I handed among my whole dialogue of the hundred fifty-five rescue runs and two hundred thousand dollar cost to the taxpayers for fighting brawls and overdoses at Harrington Hall and rescue workers getting assaulted, and the number of arrests from Cranston PD and sex offender notifications that are in front of you. That doesn't include the state police, six arrests in six months, all of this that you're paying for, plus an officer to monitor registration of sex offenders, which is a separate salary. I told them, on any given month, I can pick a sex offender that's going into Harrington Hall, that they're waiting to put on the registry when they're done clogging a toilet or whatever other foolishness they're doing in there, and these are some high-risk individuals. You'll see in that packet Bruce Peavy, his photo's in there and his record. This is a man who you'll see two first-degree sexual assaults. It was two women he raped, actually three, but the third dismissed the charges. He raped an inmate in the prison. He put a correctional officer in the hospital. He had about four B and Es, three B and Es, and larcenies on him, okay? And he assaulted another inmate. This is a very dangerous individual, and you'll see the timeframe with me using public records, that they waited five days before they even noted, notified Cranston PD that he was there. So he is wandering around the community, off the radar, not on the registry. This is dangerous for Western Cranston, the Harrington Hall area, and this is happening at any shelter across the state. Now, the Senate floor voted this through unanimously. We fought to the very end, and I was in meetings with leadership in the House since November, and yet it was stymied. I had multiple representatives willing to sponsor this bill and co-sponsor this bill. The leadership held this out. Tomorrow morning, the Alliance to Save Communities will be releasing a press release for all the media with our concerns. It's not if something is going to happen, it's when something is going to happen. Just last week, there was an individual who got in the inside perimeter, wandering around the grounds, because they're wandering everywhere, and it took four correctional officers to take this man down. He was on bath salts and intoxicated. One correctional officer with a detached retina, one with an injured shoulder, two in the hospital, two discharged from the hospital, three state troopers, once he was handcuffed to get him in the car. He was, this is what he was doing. He had been drinking all day, his sister said. This is coming off the feed. He had issues, he was on bath salts, and he was on his way to trying to find Harrington Hall to visit his friends. What would have happened if he got into Harrington Hall with those twenty-seven-year-old Masters in Social Work Brown University girls talking about the social worker code of ethics when he got in there? Or one of the other males who was confrontational, who often gets arrested for brawling when the fire and rescue have to go there and the police? I'm going to resubmit this bill in the fall. You know, I passed a child safe zone bill in this state, which was huge, and everyone was afraid of it, and I had, whenever I put in a serious crime bill, murder sentencing, to have them serve the sentence for murder that's equal to the severity of the crime, these are tough crime bills. The child safe zone bill, you should not have a registered sex offender working in any facility that services children. We caught one at Hasbro Children's Hospital. I worked on that with Tim Wayne. I had the ACLU threatening to sue us, the Trial Lawyers Association, the public defender's a lawyer, so I'm used to this, okay? We're talking, well, maybe there'd be lawsuits with this bill, this notification bill, mandatory registration. Guess what? There's going to be lawsuits if a child ends up with one of these individuals exposing themselves to a child, or a woman, or, God forbid, worse. We're playing with dynamite here. I will put the bill back in next year. I'm asking you to consider putting it back in as a resolution because this situation is not going to change. When we did this, what changes did take place? House of Hope is no longer going to be the contractor running Harrington Hall. It'll be handed over to Crossroads in July. They removed a certain number of sex offenders. March sixteenth, when Councilman Favecchio testified in front of the Senate Judiciary, I knew there was an estimate of around thirty-some sex offenders in there. He gave an exact quote from Cranston PD of forty sex offenders, I believe. Correct, Council?
I think it was, oh, forty-nine if you counted the level ones.
There we go, forty-nine out of eighty. Well, they removed some, and I know of thirteen that were moved to Emmanuel House on Public Street in Providence, a block away from the men's school, a school away for disabled children. That makes a lot of sense, putting thirteen sex offenders near a school for disabled children. The Alliance, you know who we are. You know we stick with these issues. We will be on the news, we will be confronting, auditing these nonprofits, auditing their practices, the kind of services they're giving their clients that are wandering all over, even all the way up near the mall, they're on the bus lines all day, they're shoved out the door at seven in the morning, come back at seven at night, how these sex offenders are not registered, and the risks that are caused to our communities, that the safety communities risk. So, thank you very much for all of your support when you people passed this resolution. It was very important. Rhode Island is going to be upset when the Alliance releases a press release on this. There is no excuse, especially when you see an entire Senate floor pass this bill. There is no excuse, especially when you see an entire Senate floor pass this bill. And, you know, the murder sentencing bill took us a few years to get through. I like to get bills through in one year. There's serious crime bills, they're done in a year, it makes sense to get it done. There's imminent risk and threat to the community, that's what's in this bill. I didn't expect that we'd come up to these roadblocks. There was either an unable, either unwillingness or inability in leadership in the House to make this happen. But I know there are plenty of reps who wanted to be on this bill. So thank you, please put the resolution back in, I'll be putting the bill back in, and hopefully we're going to get some changes in how we handle sex offender registration notification at these shelters, and how these programs are monitored on what they're doing with their clients. Thanks.
Okay. Thank you, Carolyn. Anybody else from the public that can speak on any item? Hearing none, public hearing section is now closed. Election of city officials. Councilman Stikos, do you want to handle this part of it?
I'm sorry, what did you say?
Would you like to handle the nominations for the Arts Commission?
Okay. We had more people interested in the Arts Commission than we had spots. So the names that you see here for both the, for the full commission member and the alternates are everyone who was interested, except one person who lived in Massachusetts and says she's going to move to Cranston, but to be on the Arts Commission, you have to be a resident of Cranston. So she's, she's obviously not here. Then the four people for the full membership, and three for the, for alternates. The alternates, we heard from, just starting at the bottom, Lynn Proder, we heard from, I guess Councilman Poploskas heard from her after the meeting. Miriam Perry did not, did attend the meeting, and she's not an artist, but is interested, said she would help out in any capacity. So that was kind of why she ended up in the alternate category. Michelle Aguiar attended the meeting that we had, is an artist, and there were only four slots, so somebody had to be the fifth person kind of left out, and that was her. The Arts Commission members, this I think is a pretty power-packed group. Len Cabral is a storyteller and headed up the, I think it was called Roots in downtown Providence, it was an arts venue. Lynn Collinson is the managing, runs Second Story Theater in Bristol. Rebecca Flores was very vocal at the meeting about the need for arts, she's a visual artist. And Sal Mancini is a photographer who has done photographic work on Knightsville. So that was in committee, that was kind of how we split the nominations up. I think realistically, that since the Arts Commission has, at this point, no track record, some of the members will probably fall by the wayside, because it won't be doing what they want it to do, because we can't do everything. And the alternates will get the opportunity to move up and participate. So I'd like to move the approval of these, these names.
A motion been made to approve all the nominations for the Arts Commission.
Second.
Motion, there's a second, any discussion on the motion? Councilman Vivekio, I'm sorry, Councilman Farina.
Just point of information, do they all meet the qualifications to set forth in the ordinance?
Yes.
Thank you.
They're all residents.
Thanks. Any other questions concerning this motion? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
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 Yes. Are there any other election of city offices?
Motion to approve the alternates as a block.
I thought we approved everything as a...
I'm sorry, if that's the case, then I would throw my motion.
Throw my second.
Okay, thank you, sorry.
A report of city officers, canvassing authority, Department Hires pursuant to Rhode Island General Law 17-8-5A4, Francesco Boden and Colleen Crowley. Is there a motion to approve Francesco Boden? Motion to approve? Motion been made, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Councilman Arquette.
Councilor President, I would assume this is because it's election year with the primary and the general election. Is that the reason, you think?
That's the correct, that's why we hire extra people this time of the year for the primary and the general election year. Absolutely correct. Any other questions, Councilman Asido?
So they have part-time help, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Farina.
Do these associates have a start date and an end date? Is there a window that they're going to be?
Immediately.
When do they, when will it end? I mean, the election ends on November 8th, does their employment end a week post the election, two weeks post the election?
Director of the canvassing authority, could you answer that question? Councilman Stikos.
Their names are being recommended by the canvass-
Canvas Authority, which is the only authority that can recommend names to this body.
Thank you.
No further questions, clerk, please take the roll concerning approval of Francesco Boden.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Is there a motion to approve Colleen Crowley? Second. Motion been made in second, any discussion? Councilman Farina.
I did have one other question, will the funding for these heads come out of the canvass, board of canvass's budget? Will they cause a budget adjustment, or is the funds enough, and they fund it?
Canvas Authority Director, could you say yes or no on that?
Yes, out of the canvassing budget.
Anything other questions? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
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 Yes. Next is an update on the financial costs of the issues identified in Rhode Island State Police Report of the Cranston Police Department, Anthony Moretti. Mr. Moretti?
Approximately a week and a half ago, Director Kupanai met, and he shared with me the recent legal invoices that have been received since the last update, which was March 28th of this year. Apparently, there's no other updates, other than those legal fees pertaining to the subject matters in the report. With that, the, I believe everyone should have a copy of the summary. The cases affected in terms of the legal bills pertain to the Josephson case, Gilbo, and the active police captain, it was just a very minor amount, actually. The police captain amounted to $219. The Gilbo case was $11,878. And the Josephson case was $1,348, for a total update of $13,445,000. And so that's the update. And what I did on this summary sheet, I know Councilman Vivekio had the concern about the state police costs, I pulled it out of the body of the report and included it just as a, on the bottom. So, and there's three subtotals in the report, and there's the cost, I'll say, to date, which excludes any of the demands, because the demands are substantial, and they may result in zero amounts. And the range there is about 4.5 million to 6.1 million that I'm reporting. If you want to include the full amount of the demands, and I'm sure the city's going to maintain that, that those won't be paid, but that would jump up on the high side to $8.2 million. And then if you were to include the state police costs that did not directly impact the Cranston taxpayers, and that'd be a total of $9.2 million.
Any questions, Mr. Moretti?
Just a point of information.
Yes, Councilman.
I, yeah, I thought, I know we talked about putting it in the council communications as opposed to city officer, it's still listed as a city officer, and I didn't want to, I know there was some confusion from the public before. I know it changed down in the body, but I, but it might be more appropriate as a council communication, because it's actually a council appointee, and not the, not someone that's an officer of the city.
Well, Mr. Moretti was elected as our internal auditor by this entire city council, unanimously, by the way. So I consider him a city officer, and I think it's my decision where he goes on this, on a particular docket.
Just note my exception and objection to it.
Okay, so, Councilman Arquette.
Thank you, Councilor President, just to the Chair, Mr. Moretti, according to what you passed out, Mr. Moretti, the legal expenses the city incurred for mismanagement of its police department, a conservative figure is $5 million, and a reasonable figure is $9,185,000, is that correct?
Those are the total numbers that I'm reporting, correct.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to add to the record, thank you.
Any other questions? Hearing none, we'll move on. Report of hiring special counsel, consultants, et cetera, pursuant to Charter Section 15.05. Mr. Koop.
Mr. President, that report was distributed to the council members, as it is each month, by the legal department.
Okay, I noticed that Cranston Fire Department requests for continuation of services.
Yes, Mr. President. Chief William McKenna, anticipating reaching his 62nd birthday in the next couple of weeks, has requested to be continued in service. Chief McKenna has demonstrated his ability to continue to serve, and I strongly urge the council to approve this request.
Motion to approve. Second. Motion been made to approve, and it's been seconded also, any discussion on the motion? Councilman Vivekio, I'm sorry, Farina, the second time, I made a mistake.
I've got to say, we're lucky to have Chief McKenna, I've been privileged to know him for several years, many years now, as a councilman. We got, we always have the privilege of walking in the Gaffney Parade together, and, you know, 38-year-old, slightly overweight man like myself, he is a, healthiest 63-year-old I've ever met in my life, I think he could have ran circles around me that day. So, more than happy to have him continue in our chief for one more year, I think, Kelvin Vivekio, and I asked him how many more years he was going to serve us, and he said, "As many as I can," so, love to have him as long as he could stay.
Councilman Vivekio.
I would just echo the Councilman's sentiments, he did tell us that, at the parade, that, you know, he's got a lot of energy, so, and I hope he stays as long as he's able, because he's an asset.
Any other discussion concerning this matter? Hearing none, clerk, please take the roll.
Councilman Farina?
Yes.
Councilman Stikos?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Claims settled by the solicitor.
Councilor President, I have a question on executive communications.
Yes.
I believe this is the June meeting, and since this is the last meeting, aren't we supposed to be doing fourth-quarter transfers? And if we're not doing them at this meeting, why not? And when will we be doing them? Will there be a special council meeting, or something to do them?
Through the chair.
Yes.
The, there's an ordinance being introduced this evening as new business for the fourth-quarter transfers, that's 6-1606, it'll be referred to the Finance Committee for hearing on July 14th.
Well, that's, that's great, that we're doing it, but we still should be doing fourth-quarter transfers tonight, and I know of at least one that we have to do for, I believe, police vehicles or whatnot, that we said we were going to put it in as a fourth-quarter transfer, and we haven't. So, I'm just, you know, trying to find out who enforces the charter and who doesn't, or if it's selective, or this is why we don't have any fourth-quarter transfers tonight.
It's a good question, anybody have the answer to that? Maybe the administration explained to us why we do not have fourth-quarter transfers.
Councilor President, the fourth-quarter transfers were introduced tonight as new business for next month to be considered by the council. I'm not sure what else I can tell you, other than that.
Could you tell us why the delay? Why did it take so long?
Well, it's not really a delay, it's more of a timing. We have to, we have to try to figure out what bills are still outstanding as of June 30th, and then try to determine which funds or departments have excess money that we can transfer to accommodate the departments that went over budget. And as you'll see from the ordinance that we submitted, that there is quite a few of transfers that we proposed for the fourth quarter.
Councilman Asido.
I can understand that going forward, and I would appreciate, appreciate the effort so we could solve this issue. However, we're in violation of the charter, I believe, and I don't know what the remedy for that is. Mr. Quinlan, do you concur that we're in violation, and what, I mean, who's the charter enforcer here?
The charter.
I just need to take a look at that section, Councilman Asido.
And while Mr. Quinlan is looking, I just want to add one more comment, that this entire body, when they were sworn in two years ago, took an oath that they would support the Constitution of the United States, the laws of the state of Rhode Island, and the charter. And here we are, fourth quarter, and we're just disregarding it. So I just, you know, don't want to violate my oath, so maybe that's why I'm making an
Councilman, you are correct that Section 616 of the charter does require that interdepartmental, between-department transfers shall be made during the fourth quarter, the last three months of the fiscal year. That is the language of charter, however, there is no language there or anywhere in that section that deals with if it is not done in accordance with that section of the charter. It does not have an enforcement mechanism, I guess is the short answer.
is the short answer.
Does that answer your question, Councilman?
No, not really, but, I guess, I mean, it does, in the sense that we got, got the word from the charter, so I guess, you know, we can just have rules and regulations and laws, and it's a charter, and just not obey them.
You always introduce the charter change.
That's, I'm gonna do that.
All right. To the Chair. Councilman Farina.
Yeah, as I read the Transfer Appropriation Section, I'm no attorney, but it says, "At the request of the mayor, but only within the last three months of the fiscal year, the council may by ordinance may transfer any portion of the unaccommodated balance," but it says right before that, "It needs to be submitted within the last three months," these were submitted in the last three months of the year, but due to our meeting schedule, we can't meet erroneously, we'd have to schedule a special meeting, they were submitted a week ago, which would be June, which would be the last month of this fiscal year, so the charter doesn't explicitly state when we vote on it, it had to be submitted, unfortunately, our meeting schedules don't allow us to meet that quickly, potentially, we should have had a special council meeting to vote for these things, but one was not scheduled.
Yeah, it's nonsense, but it's all nonsense. We need to change the charter. Councilman, respectfully, I would have to disagree with your interpretation, "At the request of the mayor, but only within the last three months, the council may by ordinance transfer," I think those are the operative words, "within the last three months, the council by ordinance may transfer," doesn't say "within the last three months, in the first month of the next fiscal year," and I understand the schedule issue, but I'm just responding to your request that, I, on your interpretation.
No, that's, interpretations vary.
Okay, Councilman Siro.
I just don't want to beat this with a horse, but usually when we have things in the charter, there's an ordinance kind of that tells you what to do, Mr. Quinlan, do we have, do we have an ordinance someplace that tells us how to do these fourth quarter transfers, I mean, I know there's one being introduced, but...
I, well, there's one being introduced for tonight, but essentially, I guess, the concern and the question, when you look at this, if it is not introduced, and it is, and the council does not by ordinance transfer those portions within the last three months, I don't know that you have power in the next fiscal year to do it, that's my concern.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President, I mean, the simple solution is, we need to change the charter, there's a thing in law called the impossibility of performance, and there's no way to make the transfers before the fiscal year ends, so, you're trying to, the charter doesn't speak to this issue correctly, I think, so I think it's very simple, we issue, we, I'll introduce a resolution for next month, we can do, we can put it on the, on the ballot, I guess, if we have to, for a charter change, but it doesn't make sense to, it just doesn't make sense to try to do something that it's impossible to do.
Councilman Siro.
I, I agree with you, Council Favecchio, however, we sit on the same committee, where we had a situation where I believe it was a police vehicle that needed to be repaired, and there was no money left in the police budget to repair that car, it was, it was appropriated, and we said to do it for another department, and then when we did that, we said that as long as we do a fourth quarter transfer, to make the adjustment, now, I know that's a small case, and I understand when Mr. Strom speaks, you know, I understand the stuff with the healthcare costs, I understand that, I mean, we're able to set up an account, you know, where we get late tax payments for this year, and take credit too, but, I mean, I think, even though it might be a small amount with this police vehicle, there's probably other accounts that are significant amounts, that, you know, we just need to know where we stand, now, ultimately, I know everything balances out, and it looks zero, but, you know, as a fiscal manager for the city, which we kinda are, we just need to see that, so we can see which departments are overspending, or underspending, and why, so when we do the budget for the next year, we can make those adjustments, so that, you know, there's not a deficit situation, or a rub getting from Peter to pay Paul, so, so that's all, that's, that's how I feel.
Councilman Farina.
To the clerk, when will they be submitted?
When were they received by me for introduction?
Correct.
I believe, last week, from Mr. Igo.
So in theory, we could have scheduled a special council finance committee meeting to hear them, and then heard them tonight.
That wouldn't have been possible, because we have to advertise public hearing on ordinances, there's a advertising schedule, it can't be passed until after 14 days from its introduction, so you would have gone into, you would have gone past June, if you're looking at a calendar.
Again, so if it's so important, we could violate to suspend the rules and hear them tonight?
Not the advertising, it would have to be an emergency.
Well, through, through our chair, the attorney, it sounds like we're in violation of the charter, and we have no purview to do it next month, so wouldn't this constitute an emergency?
I do not believe under state law that failure to introduce an ordinance in a timely fashion constitutes an emergency.
So we have to do it next month?
I think the council has to evaluate whether to do it next month, and whether it can be done appropriately, because it says, "But only within the last three months of the fourth quarter," I mean, I didn't write that portion of the charter, so, I'm just trying to help guide you on how to comply with it.
Through the Chair.
Yes.
If it's helpful, I did look a while back, when this issue came up, as to when fourth quarter transfers had been introduced, and when they'd been passed, and most, there may have been one year when it was actually passed before the, the beginning of the next fiscal year, all other years, they, it's always been into the summer, sometimes they've been continued in, into the fall as well, historically, they have never been passed within the last quarter.
Councilman Stakos.
Yes, could I request that Mr. Quinlan give us a memo about what we should do about this situation?
Yes, I'll get you something before the next meeting, I will get you a memo on that before the next meeting, that's all, something.
Okay, can we do that before the next meeting of the Finance Committee?
Right, right.
That'll be the...
Do I have to ask him to do it?
Great, thank you.
Any other questions concerning this? Okay, moving on. Well, I guess, Council President Communications, me.
First of all, I'd like to, I understand that Ken Hopkins is in the hospital, I don't know if that's true or not, maybe, what, did I show the jury, well, let's, let's aim by, a swift recovery, and although we definitely disagree on many things on this council, this is why it's called a democracy, we can agree to disagree, and net result of that is good government, and I think overall, the taxpayers of this city have gotten good government from this city council, so you're all to be applauded for your efforts, the time you take out of your busy schedules, and the time you dedicate to your communities, without you, this city would not run as efficiently as it could run, not that it runs efficiently now, but it could do a lot worse, so, I'm here tonight to congratulate every one of you for your service, and hope you all continue. Now then, my comments, with everybody, I go safe and happy 4th of July.
Councilmember Communications, Councilman Stakos.
Thank you, there's no need for a report on the first item, talked to Director Barone about that, just wanted a status report on the, I can never remember the name of the project, the Cranston Discovery...
Rhode Island. The Rhode Island Foundation Grant.
Right.
We received a grant, obviously, we've conducted a couple of meetings, I've had a couple of meetings with Historical Society, and Ed Gasha from the library, so right now, we're just trying to get some, get some historical information, and possibly explore the possibility of a walking tour, so we're gonna, that's where we are now.
Thank you, that's it for me.
Councilman Buss.
Thank you, Council President, I'd like to report that 25 Belmont, the grass has been cut, as well as, I believe I emailed Mr. Barone, or Director Barone, 57 Basswood, they decided to cut their grass as well, so...
That was a scratch, right?
Yes, so the vines are gone, and just other various items, I forwarded to the director about potholes and whatnot, so hopefully they'll be filled soon.
Those were all requested today.
Awesome, thank you.
Councilman Aketo.
Thank you, President, okay, we'll just take it from the top, how is the Alton Manor dumping, Jeff, is that under control this time?
The portion of that land that's owned by the city has been cleaned, the portion of the land that's owned by Cranston Housing, she is still debating that she owns the land, or doesn't own the land, so I don't think that has been addressed.
Is there anything we can do, what direction should we take with that?
We've agreed to help her repair the fence once that area is cleaned, I think, police car went through it or something, so we've agreed to help her repair that fence, but we have, we don't have the resources to go in and clean it.
All right, I understand, I noticed in my travels to the neighborhood Gladstone Street, there is definitely garbage bags on, on the hill, and also, where there's holes in the fence, people are beginning to dump furniture, old chairs, old tables, I need to get a crew over there.
I already emailed Clean City Coordinator, he's, he's on that.
Great, okay, 38 Barrett's been done, that's a retread, and 362, so those are all set, so now, we're with City Inspections, that's who we are, and, you know, I emailed you, and I requested that during ordinance committee, we could get someone from Inspections, I had a few questions, but evidently, that didn't transpire.
Can I just go back to 362 Princess?
Sure.
The email that I received, you were looking for, you were looking for 38 Barrett Street?
Those have been done, I checked...
There is no 38 Barrett Street, no, no.
It's the one next door to 38, I think I made that quite explicit in the last meeting.
That's what I wanted to ask you, it has been done, but I just wanted to make sure that we did the right thing.
Right, I checked those out, they're all set, thank you very much, I get around my neighborhood, City Inspections, that's who we are, so, last, I sent you an email requesting a member of Inspections attend the ordinance committee, but that didn't happen, I don't know why that didn't happen, it didn't happen, so, tonight, I'll just tell you the experience I had, and we'll see, you know, what, I had a neighbor call me, and complain that a, an individual who lives at 83 Whale Street built a deck, not only did he build a deck, but he built a structure on the deck, and the neighbor asked me to, to go to the Hamilton Building and check inspections, when I spoke with a Mr. Burke, I gave Mr. Burke the address, and he answered that there was no permit, so the owner of that house had no permit to build a deck, or the structure on the deck, at that point, after my complaint had been registered, I filed a complaint, it's documented, evidently, Inspection sent over an inspector, and from what I heard from this neighbor, because I wasn't party to the communication, the inspector just told a man who built the deck to get a permit, no fine was issued, no warning was issued, and I find that, you know, quite odd, that there was no inspection of that deck, there was no inspection of the structure that was built on that deck, and there was no warning, and the bottom line is, I was told by the neighbors that this gentleman who lives at 84 Whale, 83 Whale Street, puts up two fung signs, fung for mayor, every election year, so what I'm wondering is, do the Republicans get warnings, and those who put up Democrat signs, they get fined, I mean, that's my issue here, so, could you look into this and find out why the person who put up the fung sign didn't have to pay a fine while building a deck and a structure on the deck without a permit, and that's the issue?
I'm not even gonna respond to that.
Last item is a ward three list of street schedules to pave, I've been waiting for about three months now, so hopefully, properly, the mayor doesn't want to pave any streets in Ward Three, but I'd like to, you know, to see what, if there's any projection.
Councilman, we had this conversation at the last meeting, you know that the streets in your wards get paved with community development money, and you know that money hasn't been issued yet, we had this conversation, so I have the list for you, Councilman, okay?
Regardless whether that money's been issued in August, to Barone, there should be a list of streets, according to your department, Public Works, that need to be paved, and I'd like to see that list, regardless, we have no money, or we have money, there should be a list of streets that say, "This street should be paved," end of story.
Okay. I'm next. Gee, after my big speech about working together.
You only said council.
Councilman Siro.
Thank you, first of all, Jeff, thank you for being so good, as far as getting back to me, I know we've had a number of issues over the last six weeks, and before I asked the question, I've been probably knocking on a few doors every weekend, for the last three weekends, probably about 90, and the overwhelming question is, when's my street getting paved, so, I know we've exchanged a bunch of emails, but I think, not only would it benefit me, but it would benefit anybody on this council who's running for reelection, I know the report was issued, but if we have something hard copy tangent while we're there, and we could show, and explain something, I think it would be very helpful to anybody who's running for reelection, so...
Okay, I do have a list of streets that, streets that were paved in 2015, I also have a list of streets that are going to be paved in the 2016 paving season, somebody can make copies, you guys all can have them.
That'll be great.
The only one, and that ordinance passed tonight, there was a question for Lipit, if that money was gonna be out of the impact fees, so Lipit Avenue will be done, and Shore Avenue, we're gonna do Shore Avenue in the fall, we're just waiting for reimbursement from Providence Water, so...
But what about that management or consulting study that was done, that had the ratings of all the streets?
Yep, I told you that I would have that available, if you had any questions to call me.
But can I get a copy of that?
I'd have to find out, it's, it's, it's a thick book.
I understand that, but is there a reason why we can't get a copy of that?
I just have not asked Public Works Director to release it.
All right, all right, can we possibly do that?
I can ask him.
Or do I, do you want me to send an email over to the mayor's office to ask him if I can get it through the mayor, or, I mean, I just think it's a good thing to have in the car, so you could respond to these people right away, and you could see how things are rated, and so you know, I mean, I just hate knocking on a door and saying, "Oh, I'll find out for you," and, you know, I mean, I really don't want to do that, I mean, if I have a list...
Well, I, I have a list of streets in your ward that are either being paved, or have been paved, if the street is not on the list... If the street is not on the list, chances are it's not going to get paved. But, I mean, you're welcome to this. Okay. Can you give that to the clerk? Clerk will get it to me.
Councilman Favecchio.
I'll chime in.
Can I just, before you go, I want to give you an update on Wilbur and... Conley? Conley. We went out there with Northeast Tree, and they're evaluating it now. Thank you, thank you.
Councilman Favecchio.
Thank you, Council President. Just as a follow-up on the last question, again, we don't have the money to do all the streets we need to, but we have it on the ballot for November, so hopefully that bond issue goes through, and we'll be able to do a lot more streets. I had, in a follow-up to the lady from Alliance for Safe Cities, or Safe Communities, I was hoping that we were going to announce that that bill passed through the legislature, but evidently it died in the House. But the -- and that's the reason that I've asked for some increased police patrols, because we've had a number of issues between the Harrington Hall surge of residents and the issue of them going to the libraries. As you may recall, during the budget season, the people from Harrington were showing up at the library, going to the -- using the computers, taking computer classes. And I was told by Chief Windquist that they found a way around the security of the internet at the central library. So God knows what they were, you know, what they were accessing. In addition to that, I received a complaint the last couple of weeks of some people sleeping in the woods behind, in an area across from New London Avenue, across from the medical center. There's a wooded area, and there's a bunch of houses in Garden Hills and Glen Hills. And there's an area there, and there's some complaints about people walking through that area constantly. It's apparently going to and from Harrington, and also some sleeping in the woods supposedly. So I, you know, I don't know whether we can afford to do it, but certainly with that registration bill not passing, it's going to put a greater burden on our police department anyway, since we already have a full-time officer assigned to sex offenders. And now they're going to have to, you know, they don't know who's there unless they call them, which seems to be, I don't know, and most of the homeless people have cell phones, but they would have to use the Harrington Hall phone to call the police, which they're already under a 24 obligation to notify them when they move into a city, so. But I think that, you know, I don't know if there's anything we can do, or if we can ask Chief Windquist to...
I have, I brought that to the attention of the chief. He's going to increase the police presence there. There's also a full-time state police patrol in that area as well. As a matter of fact, it was the state police that responded to that assault on the correctional officers. So they have a, I guess you call it a substation, or they do have a full-time patrol in that area.
And those numbers that I reported were from the chief, our chief, as to how many sex offenders have been at Harrington Hall on a daily basis. So the numbers have grown substantially since four or five years ago, when there was, they were keeping it to five people at any given time. So I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Councilman Santa Maria.
Thank you, Council President. Speaking of roads, could I get an update on Budlong Road and Woodridge Road, which is the road between the church and...
Budlong and Reservoir?
Oh, cilantro.
Cilantro. That's going to be paved curb to curb. Providence Water still has some work to do.
Did I hear curb to curb?
Yes. Curb to curb.
I like that.
Ron, curb to curb.
Okay, because Director Mason wasn't too optimistic about curb to curb. Thank you, I'm not going to ask any more questions because I don't want to ruin the... Left that one on a high note.
Councilman Farina.
Thank you. I didn't have any other to offer, but I only have two things. I remember my family was a victim of a level-two sex offender. I know this entire council stands against sex offenders and will push forward this legislation, but I want to thank you, Councilman Mike Favecchio, for being our champion on these causes. Every time they come up, you're the first one to stand in line to make sure that Cranston City Council's voice is heard. I appreciate everything you do in that regard, and we'll always support you in doing that.
Thank you.
And secondly, I know Council President Lanny mentioned that he hopes we all come back, but sadly, one of our members is term limited and he cannot come back. So to echo the Council President's statements, Councilman Santa Maria, for 10 years, you've been on this council, doing a good job. The city will be sore to lose you. Hopefully, we'll replace you with an able-bodied person to fill your shoes. You and I haven't agreed all the time, but you've been good for the city, so thank you for all you've done. And we have six months more of you, but I'm sure, I'm sure after that, you'll be around a little bit, but good luck, sir.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, is any old business?
No old business, but we have lots of new business.
Oh, is it like new business?
The following, the following four ordinances are all an amendment of Chapter 10.32 of Title 10 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Motor Vehicles and Traffic. They are 6-1601 for Cranston Street, Turner Avenue, and Vinton Street, a three-way stop; 6-1602 for Fortson Avenue and Greenway, a two-way stop; 6-1603, Abbott Street and Highland Street, a three-way stop; 6-1604 for Case Avenue. But all four to be referred to ordinance committee for hearing on July 14. Proposed ordinance 6-1605, an amendment of Title 6.08 of the Code of City of Cranston entitled Animals Generally Pretending to Leash Dogs on Walking Trails, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on July 14. Proposed ordinance 6-1606, transferring appropriations and amending the budget for the fiscal year commencing July 1, 2015, and ending June 30, 2016, fourth-quarter transfers and supplemental appropriations to be referred to finance for hearing on July 14. Proposed ordinance 6-1607, ordinance ratifying the Teamsters Chauffeurs, Warehousmen and Helpers of America, Local Union 251, municipal employees. Collective bargaining agreement for fiscal years 2015 through 2018 to be referred to finance for hearing on July 14. Proposed ordinance 6-1608, an amendment of Title 2 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Health and Safety, fines for dumping of mattresses, to be referred to Public Works for hearing on July 11. Proposed ordinance 6-1609, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Zoning, a change of zone for 100 sock gnosis crossroad, to be referred to ordinance for hearing on July 14. Proposed ordinance 6-1610, an amendment of Chapter 17 of the Code of City of Cranston 2005 entitled Zoning, 950 Phoenix Avenue, this is an amendment to the MPD, plan to be referred to ordinance for hearing on August 11. Resolution authorizing City of Cranston to consent to mutual aid agreements with the Town of Coventry, Town of Johnston, City of Providence, Town of Situate, City of Warwick, and Town of West Warwick, to be referred to finance for hearing on July 14. The following new claims are all being referred to the Claims Committee for hearing on August 1. The following are personal injury claims. Charles Bayer from alleged incident on March 10, 2016; Eliza Osiara Jr. from alleged incident on April 14, 2016; Kimberly Torres from alleged incident on May 12, 2016. The following are property damage claims, also to be referred to claims for hearing on August 1. Brianna Jeremiah from an incident on March 27, 2016; Deborah Settle from incident on May 4, 2016; Donald Sweet from alleged incident on February 5, 2016; Barry Sullivan from alleged incident on May 8, 2016; Dean Estates Apartments from alleged incident on February 2, 2013; Kimberly Torres from alleged incident on May 12, 2016; Isabel Manzo from alleged incident on May 29, 2016; Mark Perry from alleged incident on May 21, 2016; and a claim from Alfred Bucci from alleged incident on February 1, 2016. And that is all the new business.
Is there motion to, before all matters? As a river, the city clerk. So moved, most invading secondhand discussion on this. Hearing none. Clerk, please take the roll.
Yes.
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 Yes. Is there a motion to adjourn?
Move.
Yep.